Welcome to the April 17th meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. We'll start with the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we will start, we have an announcement that is about Arbor Day, right? Let me see where that is. Stephen's not with us tonight, so we have Paul Msterzick sitting in, and then Maria's is not here either, but the Arbor Day, do you want to read that?
Sure, if you'd like me to. Arbor Day celebration. Join us as we celebrate the living legacy of our trees. Bring our community to Arbor Day on Thursday, April 26 at 1:00 p.m. We will join together at Wolf Swamp School for Reflections, a ceremonial tree planting donated by the Long Meadow DPW. Special guests include the Long Meadow Tree Committee, Long Meadow Club PAC 295, and the Long Meadow Gardeners, who so generously donated a seedling to each fourth grade student in the town of Long Meadow. Fourth grade students will receive their trees at this ceremony. Please join us for the special event, rain or shine. All children in attendance will receive a special giveaway. For more information on this Arbor Day celebration, please visit www.arberday.org for detailed information on how to conduct your own tree inventory, educate yourself, your children, identification of trees, and tree care, and defined fund, and educational activities for children ages three and up. I guess I didn't need really that part, but basically it's a celebration of it's your tree planting at the Wolf Swamp School on the 26th.
Okay.
Just a couple of other things too, if I could get them out of the way. The clay courts at Bliss Park, two of the four clay courts are now open.
Oh, good.
They opened up last Saturday, and the other two will be open sometime in early part of May. And last but not least, the Long Meadow Street on Thursday, on Thursday, Long Meadow Street will be closed in order that the construction where they're putting in a new water main for Chandler Avenue, the Long Meadow Street will be closed. The traffic will be detoured over by Center School on the east side of Long Meadow Street in order to get around that, and again, it's to connect the Chandler Avenue water main with the new construction. There's just a minor detour there, and I think everyone had received the information, I suspect, about the state aid numbers that are coming out of the House. Again, they're being favorably reported to our advantage, so it's good news coming from the state at this point in time.
That's good. Great. Glad to hear that. Okay, can we move on to resident comments, if we have any? None recognized? Okay. Any Select Board comments?
Paul, why would they close all of Long Meadow Street just because of that one?
Well, they're going to detour it to the east side. The main road is going to be closed because they have to do the hookup where they're working now is on the green, and they need to go across the street, so they have to make that connection to get across the street.
So you'll be detoured in front of?
Center School.
Under Center School.
But north of there will be open, no?
Yeah, north, they're going to close it from Bernie Avenue to William Street. I'm sorry. If I've misled people, say the whole street is closed, but...
And Mark?
Yeah, I have a few things. First one is, just to follow up on the Arbor Day, I'd sent a note to the Tree Committee, among other people, just asking for the status of our tree belt trees following the October 2011 storm. You know, we boosted our budget a lot and spent a lot of effort on it, and I was just trying to get, you will, a seven-year update on where we stand, on how many have been replaced, and how many yet to go, and where we stand, so hopefully we'll hear that from the Tree Committee in some near-future date. Another thing is that at last meeting, we had Paul, Paul Msterzick and I had this discussion about the wording of the referendum that would come forward with the Adult Center, for funding the Adult Center, and Paul was correct, the wording is as proposed on the election warrant is correct. It does not state the amount of money, it just states as referenced in the town meeting. And finally, I had sent a note to Tom, other people, asking just for a review of an emergency Select Board meeting that we had back in the fall. We had an emergency Select Board meeting to approve a road cut prior to the winter shutdown on Long Meadow Street for Alex's Bagels, and it never happened. Not the meeting happened, but the emergency road cut that was approved never happened, and I'm kind of wondering why this was such an emergency that we had to have a special meeting. We all had to lose a couple hours of our lifetime for this special meeting that clearly the road cut wasn't that necessary, and I guess I'd like to know some answers to that question, because it couldn't have been that critical if they haven't done it, and in fact, what tweaked that in my mind was this Alex's Bagels actually is now already open, so I think we have some answers due us from certainly EverSource, and perhaps even the owner of the mini mall there. Those are my three comments.
Okay. Any other Select Board comments?
Yeah, after I drop my pen. Last meeting, we had a discussion on the registrars.
Yes.
We pursued it after the meeting, there was normally, many years ago, it started out that the clerk was part, she is now too, but she was a Republican affiliation, apparently when the thing was first put together, so we had two Republicans and two Democrats. And when we got our new clerk, she's unenrolled, so now it was one unenrolled, one Republican, and two Democrats. And we alternated that back and forth a couple times, and we did it again last week, and we really upset a long-time-serving Democratic member. And we reached out for legal counsel, and came back and found out, in fact, yes, we can do that, we have the authority to do that. But above and beyond that, we researched, some further research, and found out there's another clause that we need to adopt at our town meeting, our annual town meeting, which would allow the committee to be reorganized to where it would forever and ever and ever be two Democrats and two Republicans. I think some people heard us talk about that. We had talked about having a motion put on tonight to discuss, and we got another legal advice that came back and said, apparently, this issue cannot be introduced into an already set agenda of an annual town meeting, but it must be voted on at an annual town meeting. We were proposing doing a special meeting within our town meeting format, which we've done on other cases, but apparently this time we cannot do it, because it must occur at an actual annual town meeting. Long and short, I would imagine we will be doing it next year. We'll propose that modification, and at that time, the committee will be reorganized and forevermore, it'll be two Democrats, two Republicans, and the town clerk will no longer count as a committee member, and it'll reestablish something that's kind of been vacillating back and forth. I hope everybody understands that as much as I do, but we were disappointed that we couldn't put the amendment on this meeting and have this issue taken care of in a more expeditious fashion, but we did try, and we just, we had a legal opinion says we can't do it.
Okay. Thank you. And that is on the agenda tonight, we'll discuss a little more.
Oh, I did know you still lifted it up.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I want to definitely go over a little bit Board of Registars discussion, but we got a head start, so thank you.
Well, excuse me, Tom, I missed it. Oh, you're right. I'm sorry, I missed it.
No, it's okay.
I missed it. Well, look at there, we're already one item down. Motion adjourned?
Well, you know, we were here late last time. The lights almost shut out on us. So, we can move on to the Town Manager's Report.
I have nothing further to report.
Then what was on the list? I did notice a few things. I noticed the DPW is writing, they ask the Department of Transportation to replace sidewalks on Converse Street that were damaged by salt, and so, you know, I wondered what are odds of that actually? They're going to DPW write a letter, but I don't know what the letter's going to do.
I believe the letter has been written. I don't believe that there's been a response to the letter coming back to the town yet.
Yeah. And I think the person who's the most experienced in this area would be Richard. What do you think? They wrote a letter to the Department of Transportation saying they should replace the sidewalks that are damaged, you think? Do you have any chance of that happening?
I don't know all the history on it, Tom.
Oh, well, because they put those sidewalks on Converse Street.
Oh, you mean the ones that were salt damaged?
Yeah.
You know, likely best not to comment about it, because it would strictly be an opinion. It's, you know, I think we mentioned it the last meeting, normally you don't put any sodium on brand-new concrete for at least a full-year period, because it is, it's green, and it will pop like that. It can also pop because of inadequate concrete being placed, and it can also pop because of inadequate installation or procedures. And I don't know which one of those three happened. The most, it seems the most possible one right now is the salt damage.
Yeah. Well, they'll probably look into it before they invest any money, I would imagine. I also saw the clerk has the job of, there's 2,100 people who have dogs in town who should have a license, and only 1,200 of those people have come to the town and purchased their license, so the rest of you folks out there who should be getting licenses, don't make the clerk have to spend a lot of time on this, if you could just come in and get your license. I'm sure you do it every year, so. And I was surprised to see that Carol Masarino retired from the library, and she's been a fixture there for a long time in the children's room, and I know that people are going to really miss her in the town, and especially the children and the good work she's done. I hope that there's some kind of celebration that they have for her. And I guess that's...
If I may, I have one other announcement, that the deadline to register to vote for the annual town meeting, for those who are registering for the first time, is tomorrow, so they have time. I believe the Board of Registars will be in Town Hall until 8:00 p.m.
Mm-hmm. Oh, good.
So, for those who have not registered yet, they still have an opportunity to register now and be able to vote at the annual town meeting.
All right. All right. And any other things that you can think of from the Town Manager's side of things that he mentioned before his vacation?
Not off the top of my head. I just wanted to hit those few things out of the departmental monthly reports.
Paul, somehow in the packet we got, usually we get a park-and-wreck narrative, and this year we got the park-and-wreck looks like a budget summary from the, I was just wondering if you could try to dig up the narrative and send it along to us?
Yeah.
I don't know if you saw that, somehow that came through, if anybody else noted that it was more or less, it looked like it was their munis dump rather than our narrative. Thanks.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions?
Just included with next month's.
Yeah. Well, we can get it out.
Because this is the last Town Manager's Report, last call, any other questions? I know that Paul will do his best to answer them, but, okay. So, we can move on to, we have a couple of things going on. We do have a liquor license amendment on new business, but I don't know if we should go through that now.
Or just approve the minutes?
And then the interceptor, should we, I think maybe we should do some of the new business and then go back to the old minutes, or? Well, we could. All right, so while the first, why would we do the old one? Okay, we need approval for the April 2nd meeting?
I'll move we approve the minutes, the April 2nd, 2018 Select Board Meeting.
Second? Okay. All those in favor? Okay. And then the Board of Registars discussion, and, you know, Richard already started us on this path, and what I did is I asked Jackie Sullivan, our Assistant Clerk, gave me a list of the registrars, and so if you go back to 2005, we had two Democrats. 2006, we had two Democrats. 2007, we had one Democrat. 2008, we had one Democrat. 2009, 10, 11, 12, and 13, we had two Democrats. 14 and 15, we had two Democrats, and then we had one Democrat, and then we had two Democrats for the last two years. So, you know, we really have had a fair representation. Prior to that, I'm not sure of all the names, but going back 2005 is a pretty good stretch. So we've had, you know, if anything, I would say, from this list, that the Republicans have been short-changed a couple of years, and so they may stand to, you know, hopefully they'll support this motion, if we get a motion on this, to put this on the warrant. I'd like to have a motion and a vote on it, because I think, I'm hoping we'll keep our clerk, Karen Ingram, Catherine Ingram, for a long time, and she is independent, so it would make sense to move this forward and have...
We had a legal opinion that says it can't be moved forward.
Well, we can have a motion to put it on, you know, to consider it for our next town meeting.
Apparently it has to be at the annual town meeting, the one in the spring?
Yeah.
And I haven't researched, but that's what the legal opinion was, and apparently it cannot be part of a special meeting within sight of the meeting, it has to be in the agenda for the actual annual town meeting.
Right.
Must be in the wording. I haven't read the thing for details, but I was surprised when he came back and said we just couldn't do it. It's just, we have to wait till next year, apparently, Tom.
Yeah. Well, we could, I guess I'm thinking we could vote on it.
Oh, sure.
If we're going to move on this, to say that we would do it in the next, you know, we want to, as a board, we vote to...
And you're talking about the adoption of, what is it, 16A? Clause 16A?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we'd have to vote to put it on to this May 2020, 2019.
Yeah, we certainly could.
Yeah.
We'll forget about it by that time, but...
Well, we'll also have another appointment next March.
Yeah.
You know, and at that one, you know, right now, we have, you know, two Republicans and one Democrat, and then, you know, so we'd have to deal with that appointment and see what happens, but...
I'm going to tell you what, I'm going to make a motion that the town of Long Meadow move at the next, the first appropriate legally allowable time to propose to the town residents that we adopt Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 51, Section 16A.
Second.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me.
Any other discussion on this? All right, sounds like a good idea to me. All those in favor? Great. Thank you. So, now we'll move on to our first order of new business, which is a liquor license amendment for the Long Meadow Country Club. Do we have someone to speak on that issue, or? No?
No.
Huh?
If you have any questions...
Oh, okay. Do we have any questions? I mean, it's pretty straightforward, the...
Yeah, I move we approve the change of manager, and that's all it is, for the Long Meadow Country Club liquor license as requested in the petition.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Deb, my understanding is that...
It's more than that. They're changing the manager and there's another section.
Change of board.
It's just split up into two sets of paperwork, because that's how the ABC...
Changing officers.
Changing manager and changing officers.
A change of officers, so...
Maybe we're going to vote one up and one down, so why don't we vote on one at a time?
Okay, so...
That way we don't have to change the motion on the floor. How's that?
All right, so we know that the first part is to just change the manager. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor? All right.
I move we approve the Long Meadow Country Club proposal for change of officers and directors as proposed.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Great. So there we go. All right, our next agenda issue is the...
You're free to call.
That was it? Thank you. Is the approval of...
Could have phoned it in, we would have told you not to show up.
It's a matter of respect.
Well, we appreciate it. Okay. We are looking for approval for one-day liquor license for stores, library, museum?
Yeah, I'll move we approve a one-day liquor license for stores, library, actually it's to the Long Meadow Historical Society for the, for an event at Stores Library on May 11, 2018.
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay. And then we have approval from Center Schools asking for a street closure request on Field Day.
Sure, I'll move that we approve the closure of, I guess it's called Long Meadow Street, between Longfellow Drive and Center School Jim Driveway on Friday, June 8, 2018, with a rain date on Monday, June 11, 2018.
Okay, and we second?
Second.
All right. Bill seconded. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. And then the next thing is the Charter Review Committee that I have, we all got in our packet from Dave Martel, a letter basically asking us to consider just having, instead of having everyone reapply for our term, the term expires on June 30, and they want the Select Board to extend their term for perhaps a six-month, so they won't need to reapply, but they do, because they're not sure they'll have their final report on June 30. So that's what we would look for, and I don't know...
Do we have an opinion, Paul?
From counsel?
Yeah, can we do this without any...
I do not have an opinion from counsel.
Do you have history on it?
I can't think of whatever, I can't think of ever coming up in the past.
I don't think we've ever done, I don't remember ever having done it in 10 years.
Mm-hmm. So the, so then, we either would extend all of them for three months, well, we...
Well, it seems to me that we basically formed the committee and appointed members to it.
Right.
Yeah, we went out for nominations.
So why can't we...
Well, I just wanted to know, because it was for a set period, and we're extending the period, I don't know, do we have to legal, do we have to re-advertise? I mean, can we do this without a problem?
Yeah, I mean, it is a good question. Your charter requires interviews and things to that nature.
Right.
I mean, I can get an opinion for the next meeting. I mean, I don't think it needs to be done tonight.
Okay. I just want to make sure we don't have a procedural error, that's all.
I guess the question I'd have is, how long? And, you know, I know that they asked for six months, but the intent of this was to have this be a fixed duration, and if we continue to extend it, to some degree, it defeats the intent of our Charter Commission, you know, formation, which was to have this be a finite, finite work of a short duration, rather than just have it continue and continue. So I, I mean, that's my concern, is that I'd want to make a very finite time to it if we did do it.
I guess in defense of this group, though, they have been fairly active.
Yes.
Yeah, they're meeting, I mean, they're meeting tonight.
Right, and I'm not arguing that they're not meeting. The intent is, though, I mean, they can go on for 10 years if we want, if we let them to, and the intent was get back to us and get us a report in the...
Give me like a congressional inquiry, I know.
Whatever it is, Richard.
Well, when I talked to Stephen about it, I asked if Dave Martel, as the Chair of the Committee, could come and let us know a little bit about, you know, what they've been working on, and what sort of the unfinished businesses they need to do, because that would give us an estimate about, you know, is six months going to be appropriate? So there's two parts of this. One is, can we do it legally without violating any of our bylaws about appointments? And then the second thing would be, you know, where are they at in terms of their progress? What are the things they've worked on? Because there's a small possibility they could say, well, we're working on these six things, and we might say, well, I think your work's done.
Right, I think that to some degree, what they have been doing, because I've attended a number of their meetings, is they've been going section by section on the charter.
Okay.
And the last, I remember they were at Section 5 or 6, so they still had, and that was at the last meeting, so they still have a couple more sections to go, and then come back and summarize everything precisely, and then put that recommendation together. That's where I believe that they are.
Okay. All right, so Section 6. But, so I'm getting a sense from the Board that you'd like them, so we want to get a legal opinion, and then would people like to have them come and talk to us about what they've been doing?
Yes.
Yes? Phil? Does that sound good?
I think that's a good idea.
I mean, I don't need, because they're going to make a final report to us anyway, Tom, which would be a briefing.
Yeah.
I don't have a need to be in the middle of their negotiations of their things.
All right. But I think it would be helpful to know if making it a six-month, you know, extending it a little would be appropriate. So if you could just, Paul, let them know.
Arrange for it.
It would be helpful if they could come to our next meeting, we can put them on the agenda, Deb, and then we'll find out from the Town Council if we're on the right track, so that would be good. All right.
Where did it say that it was for one year? I was looking at the committee chart, it didn't say anything about a year there unless I've missed it.
I know, I...
It says in the first, the first sentence, the first paragraph of the...
Oh, yeah, for one year, excuse me, I read over it twice, Bill. Yeah.
All right, so then we'll get to that. I guess the next thing is we're already to the North Interceptor discussion, and if you want to step up and give us a good idea. All right. So where are we at with this?
Pete, why don't you guys introduce yourselves, so people know who you are?
I'm Pete Diver, I'm the Assistant Director of Water,排水 operations in the town of Long Meadow.
And I'm James Rivers, representing DPC Engineering.
Okay. All right, so I guess there's been a lot of work on the interceptor recently, is that...
No, I think why I was told we were here, we had an incident last week where a section of the North Interceptor behind Severn off of Western, it's a section that's exposed, you know, in the air on concrete pillars. There was a contractor doing some work back there, installing a pool, and had pushed debris down on top of the pipe. There were some old stumps and stones, and it actually shifted a section, small section of the pipe, and caused it to leak. So we had to go in on a Saturday, and the contractor was there doing some work on Friday, clearing the debris for us on Friday, late on Friday, and then early Saturday morning we went in and we blocked the sewer, and we put a repair in to get it running.
Okay. And was that contractor bonded? I mean, do they, are they going to be able to cover for our costs?
Right, that's why they're, we're in touch with them now, and that's the plan, right? They had permits for the work being done and everything, so we have all their contact information to get us for our labor and our time that we put in for that Saturday.
Mm-hmm. Mark, I just, Pete, we've heard, at least on this board, an awful lot about the North Interceptor and accessibility. What was accessibility at, you know, to get there? How did you, did you go in from Severn, or did you end up going in from, I assume, not I-91, or?
We went in from the property in question. They had trucks, they actually, they're putting in a pool, so we were able to get, you know, we had our jet truck down there, we were able to get in there at that time.
Okay.
But most of it was just walking down, you know, behind it, but we did get the jet down there.
Okay, so it was, at the time at least, accessible primarily because the property was pretty well dug up with trucks anyway?
Yeah, we didn't have to go, there's another, we had taken some trees down several years ago in that same area that were on top of it, and we, one of the residents let us, actually Northern did the work, they let us come in through their driveway, there was just a couple of small little scrub bushes that we had ran over going through, so Northern could get into the back of the yard, and we got in that way also.
Okay. And how long did this repair take? I mean, we're talking hours, are we talking day and a half?
No, we're talking hours.
Oh, okay.
We thought we had set up for bypass pumping out on Western going up Severn, because there's halfway up Severn is beginning of a gravity sewer main, and, but with the jet down below, we were able to, the flow on that Saturday wasn't that bad, so we were able to maintain the height in the sewer after we had plugged it. So the other guys did the work, and it probably took about four hours.
Was it a pipe break, or was it like a gasket kind of?
Gasket, it was a joint. It was, it was an actual joint that, that pushed. It was one part of it, it was a cast pipe, and then there was a piece of concrete pipe connected to that which was going in the bank, and at that section, it just, it pushed it, pushed it up.
Thanks.
So the contractor was aware of it, I mean, he knew what, you know, after the fact, after.
Presumably. You could tell what was going on.
Peter, is there a study that is going on right now for the interceptor sewer replacement?
Right. We had originally, this was back a few years back, we had, Ty and Bond was working on the whole north interceptor project, actually going from Western all the way down to Emerson. We, two years ago, we had a 75% drawing that was presented to the Select Board at that time, just to kind of an update, but then after during that time, we had to, required by the state is we had to complete a, an I-N-I analysis on the sewer system, which entailed a lot of that north interceptor, pretty much all the sewer mains and manholes that we have in town looking at that system. So before any more work was done, we had to get this project done first, because that would give us kind of more of an idea of looking at different options for the north interceptor project. Like I said, the interceptor project in the beginning as a whole started out probably as a, half of the section completed was probably about a $2.5 million project, a $3 million project, and past, or one of our past engineers that worked for the town decided to add another section on there, which bumped it up to about a $5 and $6 million project. So at this time, discussing it with Mario Maza, which is our new DPW Director, I went over the whole project with him completely, and I felt that there were other options that we could possibly look at, and a lot of the I-N-I would, would help with that, because James here has been, he's been the boots on the ground. He, they have been traveling through all the cross-country interceptors, inspecting manholes, looking at them, and I think the number one problem that we do have is access. I know, just.
Yeah, I've been at this point to about 80% of the manholes on the easements, and we just completed all the work on the north interceptor, and accessibility seems to be the, the biggest issue. The integrity of the system is pretty good considering the age. You know, we've opened all the manholes, we've done sonar testing on all the pipe segments, and aside from some blockages, which are, you know, common in wastewater due to the nature of the solids, it seems to be in fairly good condition. The accessibility is really what we're seeing. It's difficult on feet at times to access, so improving access so we could get equipment down there is going to be one of our biggest recommendations moving forward.
Yeah, I, I've had a chance to talk with Pete before we went in the meeting, and I'm really quite confused, and this is not too time to talk about it. Back under the previous Director of DPW stated that this was his number one overall concern for the entire DPW Division was the inter, the north interceptor, and asked for design money, and the Board approved, I believe, $95,000 if I'm not mistaken, or somewhere's in that thing, and that's been three or four years ago. And it sounds like we're still studying, and I don't understand why, when are we going to stop studying and start developing specifications to do what the line originally was? Or are you telling us that in fact we were not given an accurate story four years ago? I'm confused as, as to why we're still doing this instead of being under contract right now to do the repairs. I don't care if it's $6 million, it doesn't matter, we're either going to do it or we're not going to do it. I mean, it was voted to be very important at that point because of exactly what you just experienced. That line shifting from seismic activity or something happening, and then all of a sudden we had a fractured line up there, and we got a dump of sewage going down, down to the interstate. And I asked Pete, and I don't know if he's got the answers tonight, but I certainly, I certainly think it's time for somebody to get the answers, because we, we mentioned this a couple of times on the Board, and this leak just brought it really back to the surface again. The other question that I had, and I asked is, I understand you're trying to get reimbursement for overtime, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, but I don't, I, where are we sitting on the issuing of fines or illegally stopping this type of action? We had, we had one of our residents that purposely dumped debris down the thing and, and started to fracture sewage line, which could have cost us, well, how much, Pete? A million dollars for cleanup if we got a bad one going?
It's hard to say, I can't.
Yeah, I mean, but it, it's mega bucks. It's mega bucks, right?
I mean, it wasn't that much of a.
If we shared the line.
As far as a leak.
Yeah, we shared the line.
If we shared it, I mean, yeah, we would have a, we would have an SSO and.
Right.
We would have to just notify it like we did, DEP.
And you could have just as easily had a sharing if this, if he had a bulldozer in there or something pushing debris down, wasn't paying attention. I mean, obviously, somebody wasn't thinking too much if they're dumping debris down against the sewage line to start with. So I'm going to discount the fact that somebody had concern for what they were doing, or knowledge of what they were doing, and they just were doing it. So that's, that's the worst case scenario, is we could have had a severed line instead of just a leaking line. So I, I'm, I'm concerned that this issue was before this Board three or four years ago, and now we're still coming back, and now we're saying that we're doing, I understand the I-N-I study is a very important part, but we were told that line needed to be rerouted because of access at that point to get it up off that bank. And we're four years later, three or four years, how long has Mike been gone, Pete?
I'm not sure.
Two or three years?
Two or three years.
Yeah, yeah, and we're, we're still at that point, that's what I just don't understand.
I mean, I can't speak for past Directors and past Engineers on their ideas, what they wanted.
But you've been, you've been the Associate Director or Director of the Department since that period of time also. So I mean, you're, we're in there together.
All right. Are you, are you done?
Yeah, I, I just, the answers aren't going to be here tonight, but I think we certainly are, we certainly deserve to have some answers brought before this Board.
And, and like he's saying, you know, this, this interceptor's on town land? Or not really?
There's an easement, it's not town land, there's an easement that's through there.
Oh, it's an easement, okay.
They're, they're all easements, a lot of them are on mass DOT, going through sections of mass DOT.
Like, should we have better, like, boundaries or, or, you know, markers about, you know, setbacks, like, you know, like the railroad, make sure they set everything back, you know, so, no, everyone knows they're approaching a railroad and that it's a federal offense to do anything wrong, and it, it sounds like this thing is sort of obscure, you know, it's kind of, it's there, but this guy Plough, and he didn't think it was anything special. Should we have any kind of a, you know, fencing marking system? I don't know, is there anything we could do? Do people generally ever do that around something like this?
I mean, we have easements through people's backyards where they dump leaves, they don't even know they're there, you know, they'll.
Yeah.
You know, things like that.
Where it's buried, I mean, it's pretty safe, but I would say this is an exposed area above ground.
This section, right, it's about 400 feet.
Yeah.
Probably have exposed eight inch line.
Between three manholes, so.
Yeah, like, shouldn't we have some sort of a, I don't know, fencing would do it, or flags, taping, I don't know, you'd want something that would be somewhat permanent, but not, it doesn't have to be anything expensive, it just has to be something where people know this is posted, this is a fragile area because of this, you know, I mean, we don't want to create attention to it in a negative way, but we also want to let people know, you know, if you're doing any work in this area, this is, you know, the town has this right of way. I don't know, did, did anyone do that anywhere else? Have you ever heard of that?
I've never seen a sewer line that's on a bank like this that's exposed in the air.
Yeah.
Typically, they're buried, just like.
But that's a known easement through the person's property, right?
Known to the person, but maybe not, maybe not to a contractor that they hire, which was Tom's point.
Wouldn't they automatically have to do, call dig save?
They're not digging.
They're not digging.
They're pushing.
I mean, Tom, if I could, I, I think we can, we can impose on that easement signage that says, so that people who abut that easement or run that easement, it, it warns people, it's an exposed, exposed pipeline. You know, it doesn't matter whether it's natural gas or sewage, it's an exposed pipeline, and, and somebody coming in there, you know, you know, no dumping exposed pipeline or something like that, and if we don't have that sign, we, we ought to do it, and. Yeah, I agree with Richard in this case, that somebody is liable for doing something wrong.
Yeah, because I mean, the owners could have told their contractor, this is a pipeline, make sure you stay away from this, but, you know, owners change and all sorts of things happen, but signs might be something we could look into, you know. Yeah, Mark.
I, I, I think we should more than look into it. I, I think we ought to strongly encourage the DPW to get signage along our easement, right? But, but more importantly, I, I think, Richard, I just want to respond to your, your questions, and that is that, and I don't have the answer why we were told what we were told, but my recollection was that the number one concern was, and it sounds like it's definitely is now, that seismic change would cause, a shift would cause this embankment that this, this, this pipe is on, this, this sewer, you know, interceptor to, to shift. You know, the question is, is, is the pipe, is, is the pipe integrity good? Is the pipe going to last? Is the pipe itself going to rot through or fail to the point where we need to get in there? Or is the risk simply due to some kind of a shift in the pipeline? Because if it's also due to the fact that the pipe is 45, 50 years old or whatever it is, and, and it's likely to just fail of old age, then it's incumbent upon us to take an action different from if it's, we're just worried about, you know, massive rains that cause a landslide, or some butter throwing something down there that causes it to shift, or somebody digging, digging something up, and, and, you know, I wouldn't want that pipe to break, certainly not to break once we know about it, but $6 million is a lot of money to spend of residents' money, because we, you know, we don't want to post signs or we don't want to do something to keep it from shifting, you know, and, but if, if the pipe is just old and needs to be replaced. So I think the answer for me, Richard, isn't was Mike Rabel right or not, but is, you know, can we get a good visual or engineering study of is that pipe integrally safe of its own? And then what is the risk? And if it's the shifting, what actions can we take short of $6 million to keep that thing as secure as, as we can, even if it includes somehow building some kind of access? Because I, I probably shouldn't be saying this in public, but at some point, you take one of the houses there and you condemn it, and you make that the town's right of way, because you take it by eminent domain, it's the only way down there, and I'm not suggesting we do that, but it's a whole lot cheaper than spending $6 million, you know, if, if it's only access to this thing, or you build something, build up stepway from the highway or something like that. $6 million goes a long way toward resolving an access question and a potential shifting question, but it doesn't go a long way toward shifting a structurally unsound, or fixing a structurally unsound pipe.
It was, I, I just remember, eight years ago, I, when I was on capital planning, I, I rode up to that section with Mike Rabel, and we got out and walked a section of the line, and at that point, it was access and the location, the fact that you couldn't get to it if you needed to repair it. That was the problem that he was facing, that was, that was the original discussion to relocate it and bring it up and put some pump stations, et cetera. Is that correct, Pete? Do you still have access problems?
Oh yeah, on that, yeah, we still have.
Right.
Right, we'd have to go through somebody's yard.
And you've got a situation now, could you even, could you repair it with your workforce on some of those slopes that it's in right now? Do you have the capabilities of repairing it?
Some of them I would probably say, no, you'd need some bigger equipment to, you know.
Right.
If you cut the pipe out, I mean, you know, the, there's manhole structures that you can walk right up to.
Right.
So if the pipe failed, then you just bypass pump.
Yeah.
And then you'd have to have a machine, you know, a machine come in, I mean, typically hanging, you know, a pipe over, you know, to try to, to try to do the repair. I mean, the, the repair that we did, just, it was, you know, on a steep slope, we were able just to walk down to it and.
Right.
Stood right in front of it and dug it around and cut the piece out and put a, put a little coupling piece in.
Yeah, because I think that was.
But there's other sections, I mean, I think you were talking about the integrity of the pipe, I mean, it's a cast iron pipe, it's, I think the integrity of the pipe is fine.
Yeah.
It's just that it's on these concrete pillars, and it's more of if somebody's dumping or trees, or, and that was the, the issue we had a couple, few years back, with a couple of new, new residents that moved into those houses, and they were told that, and then, you know, they put up fences and, but, you know, it's, new people come in and they forget about it, and, I mean, there's, like you said, the signage, you'd have to look at the easement, just, I mean, to put a sign up there, or even just notification to the, to the residents that, that are abutting it.
$6 million is a lot of money.
Well, the $6 million was a whole, that wasn't just that one section, that was a small part of the whole entire north, that, going all the way from Western to.
Right, but we had.
To Emerson.
The proposal was to replace, was to replace the whole, the whole thing, and I'm, what I'm saying is, if, if we're worried about, you know, whether it's erosion or somebody dumping something, there's got to be fixes short of that kind of a cost, and I don't know what they are, that's not my, not my expertise.
One of the things we discussed that was never discussed with this, with the last firm, was their plan was to move the line up onto Western, and then there would be, I want to say.
Right.
Maybe five or six homes, because they go out into this interceptor that's overhanging, and the, the main that's overhanging, and then you would put in grinder pumps, and these residents would be stuck with grinder pumps in their backyard and everything that goes along with the grinder pumps. Looking at it last week, one of the discussions that was brought up was just basically taking an easement in the people's properties in the back, making an access so we could get in there, and it's only five feet deep, and just bringing it off the bank.
And I got to tell you.
And putting it through those yards and taking.
Not knowing a whole lot about it, but if I lived in one of those houses, I know which option I'd take, you know, and, you know.
But that option was never brought up with.
Right.
With Ty and Bond. I mean, you, you asked why isn't anything, I mean, this is just a, a new look from the I-N-I study that we're doing that was just brought up to fix it.
So, so Richard, is the, is the question, do we come up with alternatives now, or does it, do we just move forward with this, replace the whole west, west interceptor?
Well, I, I think you work with the best information available at the time you make the decision, and they, they've got another opinion which may be extremely valid. Of course, that irritates me, is why wasn't this opinion there eight years ago? This is not rocket science, we just mentioned, buying an easement, putting the line up in there, that's pretty basic, Pete, you know that. This is pretty basic utility work.
For the interceptors and the siphons?
Yeah, I mean, as far as the mentality of the utility work.
They were talking about unilateral drilling, running lines under, I mean, that's way beyond my scope of, I mean, I think anybody's.
But right now, you're talking about putting easements in and moving the line.
Just this one little section, yes.
Okay.
That's, that's elevated, that's above, right.
And that's the only, that's the section that's always been under debate, if I'm not mistaken, that's the one we keep hearing about. Is that, is that true, or are there other sections?
No, there are other sections that, there was one section that we used to go through a resident's house to get it to his driveway to get to the siphon. If there was an issue for cleaning, and then that person said we damaged a car on his property, and so that's.
Okay, then I guess my final question, what is it going to take for this plan to be presented to the Select Board that has what you guys really want to do with, with a class B estimate attached to it?
I'm not sure.
Okay, Paul, there's a challenge for you, we need to find out. Because it, this is, it's been eight years, Mark.
I'm not arguing with you, Rich, I'm just.
With, I'm just asking, with the completion of the I-N-I study, would then you'd be able to complete the, the interceptor sewer study? Does one have to come before the other?
So we were looking, as part of the I-N-I study, it was evaluating the entire system.
Right.
So this just gave us an opportunity to look at the easements.
Okay.
And while we were out there, we happened to see what happened on Severn and reported it to Pete right away, which brought up this issue, but part of our intent of the I-N-I study was always just to get an evaluation of the, the easements, the accessibility, but there was no plan on our end for a full study of the north interceptor.
But the, the, the study that was started, was that completed, Pete?
It was 75%.
75%?
Completed.
So now with the new information, we'll brainstorm, I would imagine, after that.
But that 75% study was making the grinders.
Right, right, it was a whole different.
Yeah, and you're coming back with a whole different scenario now. I, I guess I just, what's it going to take to get it done? I guess really bottom line question.
I think the more fundamental question, Richard, is do we need to have it done?
Well, yeah, there's access problems. There's access problems, Mark, we know, and we still got a line that's up out of the ground.
But there may be other ways to get access, eh?
Well, that's what we're asking, when is it, when's the final decision going to Well, that's what we're asking, when is the final decision going to come? We thought it was already coming. And I know, you guys are catching what you may consider flack about it, but it's not. It's an open discussion, that the fact is, you know, it's been going on for eight, nine, ten years. It's time to get resolution and closure, whatever it is. And then if, when it comes before, if it's ten million dollars, we say, okay, what's your option two? Then we start weighing the options. But the way it is right now, we can't seem to get to a recommendation, which is unfortunate. Then we, INI studies, what's your frequency on the INI studies?
The frequency?
Yeah, how many years between the INI studies?
I think the last time that was done was in ninety.
You're that many years frequency on them?
There was an update in two thousand and one, I believe, but the last fall.
Okay, but the INI study is infiltration and inflow. And the other issue that you're dealing with is access and vulnerability to failure of a sewage line that's in a precarious location. And I know the infiltration goes into the sewage line, but it still doesn't have anything to do with the sewage line in the placement it's in and the fragility of its location. And in fact, if you had a major tree go down across that line, I would imagine it would snap it. And so it could happen any night. It's like the one line that we got going across Connecticut River, one of these days, it's going to break. And we don't have a backup. I just hope I'm not here.
Right. Well, you know, although it probably wasn't the best thing to have this thing be disrupted and start to leak a little bit, but maybe we'll move forward on finding a permanent solution. And I appreciate the two of you coming in here and thinking about other options in terms of, you know, looking at if we can, you know, move it further into the hill and bury it where it would be a lot safer. So I know that, you know, Paul will follow up with Stephen about seeing if we can move into a place where we can find a permanent resolution, because, you know, just, I think what happened just shows us how fragile that situation is. And like they said, if a big tree comes down, we could have major problems. And not that it's anyone's fault, but, you know, we're still being responsible as a town, right? If that gets, if that happens. I don't know, anyone else had any other comments on this?
Is there anything more on the INI study?
Yeah, we're working on phase two right now, which is the full evaluation. So we'll be working on that probably through June, doing the field work. And then we have an extension to complete the study with the state by December thirty-first. So we'll have our full report and evaluation by then.
All right, well, maybe we'll see you guys in October.
Did you, Paul, you mentioned this about Chandler update or?
Yeah, I just thought if they had questions, because again, traffic was disrupted today on Long Meadow Street because of the, it could be a water main replacement. I didn't know if people got phone calls from what was going on in the town green or anything like that, so.
Yeah, most of the disruption was from the gas company. They have an old gas main that's on Chandler that they had to cut and cap.
The bigger issue's been the north end of Route Five, not by the green, where there's also water pipes going in that, that, going across the-
I don't know if that's water sewer.
It looks like they might be tunneling under, I don't know.
That might be the gas company again.
Yeah, I think it is the gas company.
The gas company down at the end of Route Five, I forget the street, the second last one.
I know the gas company, they're on Bliss, they're all over the place. They're replacing-
I'm pretty sure that's a gas line.
Yeah, that's far more, seems far more disruptive, because that's where all the northbound traffic from town goes.
Yeah, Chandler's a very small street, so there's not a lot of room. So the water main are existing, which is a very small four-inch tuberulated. I mean, there's no fire safety on that street whatsoever. So we're actually going to have to remove their four-inch, which was, it was a stub, which was still live. The gas company still had a gas main that was on there. They have a new one already, but this was an old one that we couldn't do any work until they cut and capped and deactivated that line, which was still, which was still active. And that's what they were working on today. And then, of course, we were starting the water main, probably the extension part of it, which was coming up the twelve-inch in the common, so we were in the grass area. So our contractors were working there digging, and we had to shut that section down and put that piece in to go forward. But then the reason why they're going to close it down too is because they have to, you know, obviously along Meadow Street, there's about twelve to fourteen inches of concrete and rebar from the old cable cars on that street. So which has to come in, cut it, and it's going to take, you know, to put that water main across, it's going to take a day just to go through that. And then, once they do that, they have to, we make them put flowable fill back in. And then they also have to put concrete back in, and then they have to tie the concrete back into the existing. So it's a process, because, you know, on a state highway, you just can't throw dirt and compact and throw some asphalt on there, it has to be done correctly.
But people are just going to be-
Re-routing around.
Re-routing down Williams and then along in front of like Montessori School and Center School and then back.
Yeah, from Bernie, they'll scoot around. So then at the end of the day, you know, because typically what happens is, once they get the main through there, then they'll come in with all the flowable fill, and that has to set for like twenty-four hours. They'll plate it, so the road will be opened back up again with plates on it, and, you know, we'll have signage just slow. Yep, and then they'll do it again, because they'll have to, like you said, have the concrete set in, and then that has to dry, and then they can put asphalt in. But that way, we don't have to wait. Once the flowable fill goes in, you don't have to wait. Like typically, on a normal water sewer job, you're going to have to wait months just for settlement and everything else, and this will alleviate that.
Now, earlier, Mark had talked about the channel that's going to be cut across Long Meadow Street for the electricity for the bagel shop.
Yeah, I don't recall, the last thing I heard for the power, it was, you know, I don't know if it was, they needed a bigger service. They were going to go across Long Meadow, but then I heard they didn't have to, and they were just going to go across Edgewood.
Oh, really? Okay, because they're building a concrete pad.
Yeah, they poured a concrete pad in front of Rinaldi's, but they haven't cut the road.
No.
Something for, I don't know, putting a transformer or something, and I haven't heard, yeah, I haven't heard anything.
Two hundred amps, no, how many amps?
Just not done following your division, Pete.
Right.
Yeah.
But I hear enough where, I pretty much know a lot of things, yeah.
We'll be asking you detailed questions now.
Careful what you ask.
No, no, I would have, like I said, I would have, because there was some discussion about it, and they told us that they didn't have to go across the street, and they were going to come off of Edgewood.
Yeah, it's one of those times where you say, I don't know anything about that job.
And then it stopped.
Well, that would make it a lot easier. Maybe they just, maybe they didn't need as many amps as they predicted.
It still seems to me, Tom, that somebody ought to give us an explanation of why it was so important, and now it's not needed, but.
Right. Okay, and any other questions for Peter and James? No, all right.
Thank you, Peter.
Okay, well, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are moving down to the subcommittee reports. And, you know, I have a report here from the Subcommittee on Complaints Regarding the Town Manager's Relationship with Developers. And I had, folks had said they didn't have any kind of a report. Maybe that was something we did in executive session?
I think so, and then I was going to come back and brief, and then when we came back to brief, Stephen wasn't here.
Right.
We delayed it, then I went on vacation.
Right.
And then, again, yeah, and then Stephen's gone again now. You want to put it on next meeting? I can assure everybody that we did look at it fairly decent detail. And I can explain what we found, but we did not find any prima facie evidence that there had been anything done wrong by our town manager. People could certainly question some of the motives or question snippets of emails that were extracted to try to demonstrate that there was something going on. But when you get to the bottom line, there really wasn't substance that hit the threshold of saying, hey, you did something really wrong, ethics-wise.
Right.
Or professional-wise. But we'll further talk about it, Tom, in the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay? And that way, Stephen will be here in case he wants to address it too.
All right, so Marie, that would be, yeah, Marie, Deb, that would just be for our subcommittees. Look at the Subcommittee on Complaints Regarding Town Manager's Relationship with Developers. A little more discussion on the report. But, yeah, I hope that folks in the viewing audience would know that if there was anything that was, we feel that the town manager was doing inappropriate in that relationship with the developers of that property for the Young Mansion, that we would have acted on it very quickly and put things out there. Probably prior to any kind of voting took place. So, yeah, we did have folks look into it, and, Richard, they did a preliminary report to the executive committee, and then we'll follow up when everyone's here. Okay, any other subcommittee reports? Mark?
Yeah, I have two. The first one is, not really a subcommittee, but it's my position on the PVTA trusteeship on the Board of Trustees of the PVTA. As people at home may know, the PVTA is suffering a significant shortfall in their budget. It's three and a half million dollars, and the PVTA is taking two steps. One is that they raised fares, and they actually raised fares twenty percent. And I guess I'd say nay, but I was part of that decision to raise fares twenty percent next year, which is essentially a bus fare of a dollar fifty from a dollar twenty-five, a basic bus fare. There's another shoe that may yet fall on this, and that is that there may be a reduction in service. And for the town of Long Meadow, it could be pretty severe. As many people may know, about a year ago, they went through the same kind of thing. And Long Meadow, which has one bus route, basically comes down Dickinson Street, turns right on Converse Street, and then left on Route Five and goes down to the south end of town and essentially reverses that. That bus that goes down Converse Street and down Route Five only does that twice a day now, once in the morning and once in the evening. The rest of the time, the bus stops at the Jewish nursing home and turns around. Even that service may be in some serious trouble if they do further service cuts. And one of the things that can resolve the service cut is an increase in funding from the state. The state funds the PVTA pretty considerably, about twenty-six million dollars a year, and they level funded them now for two years. And the PVTA is asking for, if you will, an increase in that funding equivalent to, you know, the two percent increase, which would be about a six hundred thousand dollar increase, but that would stave off any service cuts. Because there's still some hope that the state may increase their funding, although the governor's budget didn't indicate funding, increased funding, the PVTA decided to not cut back service immediately. And they've got this, because of union contracts and bidding by bus drivers, they really need six months' notice on cutting back service. And so they've deferred it until the fall, hoping that they could get additional state aid that could eliminate service cuts. The twenty percent rate increase is going to go through. And so we've been asking all the participating towns in the community to approve a resolution, calling on the legislature to approve a increase in funding to what's called RTAs, which are regional transit authorities, and that share to the PVTA. And so I forwarded to the group here as part of our plan, it's a resolution, and I, you know, I can read it, but it doesn't, I don't really need to read the whole thing, because it has whereas is whereas is whereas is. And then it says, therefore be resolved, the town of Long Meadow urges in the strongest terms that the members of the general court fund the regional transit authority line item in their respective fiscal two thousand and nineteen budgets at no less than eighty-eight million dollars. And that's not the number I indicated, but that's regional transit authorities. The bulk of that goes to the MTA in Boston, some goes to the Worcester Transit Authority, some goes to the Brookshires Transit Authority, they go all over the place. But that would give the PVTA its share. And so I'd like to ask that the select board approve this resolution, and I'm going to make that as a motion.
Okay, do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
All right, yeah, we'll second it. So a little bit of discussion.
Yeah, I don't know else to say, other than it does have potential impact on the town of Long Meadow. The resolution's obviously an urging of the legislature to fund them at an appropriate level.
Yeah, well, you know, you look at this, two buses a day. So if a person came out, took the bus out to see the doctors in this new building they're going, they'd have to see them in fifteen minutes probably, because the bus would do this cycle through town and come back. They'd have to be able to get on, otherwise they'd be stuck here all day.
Well, in fact, the bus doesn't go to that end of Dwight Road. They'd have to walk from the Jewish nursing home to that, and then they could walk back to the Jewish nursing home and catch the next bus a couple hours later. I mean, this-
So it doesn't go on Dwight and Converse?
As it comes down Dickinson Street, it turns right on Converse Street, past the JC, past the Jewish Community Center, and goes down to Route Five. So, I mean, it wouldn't really impact this, although theoretically, you can get this bus from, a bus to this facility from Dwight Road, which is going the other way, like toward Belmont Laundry and those areas. But what we're really doing is trying to retain service along Route Five, at least in the morning and the evening, which is helpful to people who work at Bay Path College, people who may work at places along Route Five, get there in the morning for work, be able to leave in the evening and get home. And that, those were the primary people who commented when there was, were public hearings back when they were considering those, reducing or eliminating that altogether. It's also the only connection between the PVTA and the Connecticut Transit Authority, because this bus does go to Enfield and actually connects with a bus in Enfield. So, you know, we went through those hearings back last year, and that's why they retain the two buses a day going there.
I was just informed by text that possibly our sound is not being transmitted tonight.
That's all right, we can still conduct our business.
Yeah, so we've just been really having conversation, we've been lip syncing everything tonight.
I didn't hear my phone go off. Was that your wife?
Yeah, yeah. She tuned us up, she, it's only taken her an hour to figure out what we were speaking, so. Bless my heart, I didn't say that on TV, because-
But she can't hear you.
Yeah, she had the TV turned off and was reading, she decided to turn it on just to catch the highlights.
We appreciate you texting in, Eddie, a big help.
Yeah, there goes out to every resident. Yes, I'll be looking for a new home tomorrow, folks.
Anyway, I think it's important that we approve this, you know, all the eighteen cities and towns in the PVTA region are being asked to approve this.
Yeah, well, I think it would be helpful, especially with this new construction. I can't believe that there's no bus that's going to go by that new construction, where all those doctor's offices are going to be, which seems pretty, you know, it's tough.
Well, they may consider it when they see what kind of traffic it requires.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully we can get some adjustment. But I, okay, so any other further discussion? Do we want to vote on this resolution, all those in favor?
Thank you very much. The other quick comment I'll have on it is in terms of a committee report or a subcommittee report or whatever it is, that the tax ceiling task force has met again. We've decided to accept as members all those who have applied. I think there were six people who applied for-
Five or four spots.
Yeah, five applied for four spots, and so we're going to go forward with that. And we're working on a couple of proposals with the intent of getting back to the select board in this late fall. Hopefully, something coming up at the fall town meeting, but really targeting next spring's annual town meeting. By next spring, I mean the May two thousand and nineteen town meeting with some actions that will address the potential for overcoming a tax ceiling. Now, Paul, you were there, anything else that needs to be said?
No, I think that's kind of in a nutshell, for the most part.
Well, great, and again, Mark, thanks for your participation on that task force. And I know there's other folks who are putting energy into that, so. And that task force grew out of the joint meeting that we had earlier in the year with the school committee. So we applaud the school committee also. Well, it looks like we are moving to the point of adjournment.
Are we going to go into an executive session?
Executive session, yeah. And I believe we will not be returning to open meeting after that, so if I have a motion.
For the purpose of what?
Yeah, I'll move, we enter into executive session for the purpose of accepting past meeting minutes and discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or health, rather than professional competence of individual- rather than professional competence of individual, and discuss the complaints against public officer, employee, staff member, or individual.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, we do roll call?
Yeah.
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so-
Move we adjourn?
Okay.
Second.
All right.
Third.[1776.41]